I will call this meeting of the Riverside Township Board to order at 7 o'clock. So, please rise. And Trustee Luffer, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Drapka.
Present in accounted for.
Trustee Hollenbach.
Present.
Trustee Luffer.
Here.
Supervisor Wilt.
Here.
Let the records know Clerk Blough's in attendance.
Very good, thank you. First on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of the public budget hearing that was called on April the 9th.
Move to approve the minutes of the April 9th public budget hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second motion by Trustee Clark, second by Trustee Drapka, to approve the public hearing minutes of April 9th, 2019. Any discussion or additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion is carried. The minutes of the Township of Riverside Board of Trustees' closed session, and I'm going by time of adjournment, from April 9th, are before you. Are there any, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the closed session of the April 9th, 2019.
Second, oh, here's, sorry.
I have a motion by Trustee Heilandbach, second by Trustee Luffer, to approve the closed session minutes of April 9th, 2019. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. And finally, we have the minutes of the regular Board of Trustees' meeting of April 9th, 2019. What is your pleasure?
So, I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 9th, 2019.
I'll second it.
Trustee Clark moves to approve the minutes of April 9th, 2019, the Board of Trustees' meeting, seconded by Trustee Heilandbach. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, thank you. Are there any communications?
Yes, we have several. There's a thank you note from American Legion Post 488, Riverside, Illinois, Joseph Topinka Commander, saying that, "Thank you for putting this article into the newsletter, it has been a lot of work, but worth it."
That was regarding the memorial.
Yeah.
We have a letter, "On behalf of the members of the Riverside Township Lions, I thank you and the trustees for the many accommodations granted our club on numerous occasions, and our most important fundraiser, the chicken dinner could not be of held without the gracious permission, hospitality, and cooperation of the Riverside Board. The guests were impressed by the beautiful maintained historical facility and the skill with which it continues to be used and preserved. We appreciate the janitorial service the township renders." We got a receipt from Best Buddies for our contribution of the sponsorship for $2,500 thanking us. And that concludes the communications this evening.
Thank you very much, there's no action required on that, so we'll place that on file. Before we move to grants, when, if any of you are here to speak for your grant, you'll have that opportunity, but are there any other visitors' remarks before that on other topics? Very well, then we'll move right to grants, which is what most of you are here for. Our first grant for consideration is the one from the American Cancer Society. Is there anyone here to speak to it? Are there any questions from the Board regarding this grant?
I have a question.
If you would please step to the podium, identify yourself, and then we'll ask the questions.
I'm Michelle Pruitt, American Cancer Society. I'm out of the Tinley Park office, the local office, and I'm also the staff partner for the Relay for Life of West Cook.
Okay, on this grant for $1,000, is this a sponsorship grant for the Relay for Life?
That is correct.
Okay, 'cause I was, alright, that was, I was a little confused with your application. So, that's what I really needed to know. Otherwise, I make, if there are any other questions, I make a motion to approve this grant for $1,000 to the American Cancer Society to sponsor the Relay for Life on June 8th.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, second by Trustee Heilandbach, to approve the $1,000 grant request to the American Cancer Society for the Relay for Life of West Cook. Is there any, are there any questions that we have not addressed? Then I will ask Clerk Blough to please call the roll.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Drapka.
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach.
Yes.
Trustee Luffer.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion is carried for grant.
Very good, thank you. And thank you for being here, Ms. Pruitt. Okay, our next grant is, request is from the Riverside Chamber of Commerce, this being for the rental equipment for their event.
Anybody here?
What's the event?
The porta potties for a cruise night.
The cruise night.
For cruise nights.
Cruise nights, that's June 6th, June 11th, June 8th.
Okay, wait, can I just, these dates are not, that are put in the grant application are not the correct dates.
Oh, interesting.
If you look at the Twilight applications, that it is for the third Thursday of the month, and she has listed the first Thursday.
Oh dear, okay.
So, I would be willing to put this on the agenda for next month as long as she corrects the dates.
I make a motion that we table this grant.
When does it have to be approved by?
Well, the dates begin in June, but apparently we don't have correct dates for these.
The cruise night is the third Thursday of June, July, and August, and we meet on June 11th.
So, it's not a scheduling issue?
It's not a scheduling issue, but she made the, you know, she's one that-
The application was incorrect, yeah.
She gave us the incorrect dates, and I don't think I can approve this with the incorrect dates. They don't coordinate with the invoices that she gave us.
Right. All right, we have a motion to table this for reconsideration next month, correct?
Yes.
Yep, yes.
I just have a question.
Trustee Heilandbach.
I mean, has this, will you approve this grant, providing, with the stipulation that they give us the right invoices or the right grant application? I think we should consider that.
So, go ahead in approving it tonight as long as they give us the correct paperwork?
Right, and then, we don't issue the check until we get the correct paperwork on it.
I can live with that.
I don't know, I think, just, you know, if Supervisor can reach out to Janice and just tell her what the issue is, I don't think that, you know, she'll correct the paperwork, send it over, we can just approve it next month and be done with it.
Well, isn't that, isn't their first one next month?
No, it's the third, the third weekend.
It's, their first one should be June 20th.
Is that accurate?
So, they still have time? I'm fine with that, that's fine. I'll second them.
We have a motion and a second already on the floor to-
Then I have no more questions.
To defer this, not so much table, but defer this, I believe is what you mean?
Yes, yeah.
Defer this consideration to next month and ask for them to correct the dates before we do so. But probably assure them that we're willing to do so, but we want the proper application.
You know, it's a great thing, the cruise nights are really great, the car show is wonderful, it brings so many people to town, but just for the point of being accurate.
All right, then we have a motion on the floor to defer consideration of the Riverside Chamber grant until June. And for this, I think we can have a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
A little anecdote, too.
Yes.
That's why it's important that, you know, people come and represent their grants, because a simple correction could have been made, and we could have been done from this.
I agree.
You know, I'm really surprised, because Janice is generally, you know, very accurate.
They didn't change dates and fluctuate or anything, did they?
No, it's always the third Thursday. I will, for the past several years, it's always been the third Thursday of the month.
And Alex, you can vouch for that, those dates, yeah?
Unless there's graduation on that Thursday in June, then it wasn't, this year.
All right.
There's no graduations that late?
Not this year, no, but in previous years we have, as college students.
Okay.
Does that get that late?
Well, it depends on-
We've, we'll discuss it next month, it's been deferred. Very good, thank you. Next grant application is from the North Riverside Golden Ager's. Do we have someone to speak for that? Just ask any questions, all right. So, as far as this is concerned, actually, I have some questions. If you would step up to the podium so that you can be recognized. It has been called to the township's attention that your group really doesn't work with the North Riverside Recreation Department anymore, that you are not really participating as a group in their events, so I wondered if you could give us some clarification on what kind of events that you're planning now.
They, they do go to most of their events.
I'm sorry?
The members do go to most of the events.
But is it through the Golden Ager's that you go, and, I mean, I understand that there was-
Well, they would send leaflets to the club, they will give them to us, or they are all out there, and the members do look at the leaflets, pick them up, and they will participate in them.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit about how you spend the funds that, that this grant provides?
Well, okay, we, we help with the lunch, we have a meeting twice a month, we help with that, we have a Christmas party every year. This year, for the first time, we had a Mother's Day luncheon. What else do we do? If they, if we have something like a stage show, we go see a stage play, we will supplement half of it, and they pay the, they could not cover all of it. We, we will cover half of it.
Okay, and you are Dolores.
And we try to cover.
You are Dolores, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, just verifying for-
Yes, yes.
Dolores, your tax exempt letter is through the village of North Riverside.
Okay.
Right, so-
Yes, oh, yes.
So, Vera, you were saying that they're not really affiliated with North Riverside?
Well, there was a time when the Recreation Department of North Riverside did work with, with them to plan a lot of their events, and I understand that that hasn't been going on for a number of months, that there's been some, some disconnect between the groups. That was what the Recreation Department called to my attention.
They never confirmed, I mean, they never talked that over with us, this is news to me.
Well, that's why I'm trying to identify, just what kind of, what kind of cooperation you have going on.
Right, last year, we did supplement them for most of the events. The Bingo's, we gave them back their $5. What other things did?
The members, you did.
Right, members, right, right. Only the members it goes to.
But I don't think that's what she's asking.
Well, they pay, they pay.
I don't think that's what she's asking.
They pay North Riverside, and then we give it back their money.
The members do.
We give it to them, we don't give it back to North Riverside.
So, did you used to pay it directly to North Riverside?
No, they paid North Riverside, and we gave the members back what they paid North Riverside.
Okay.
What they paid for the event.
I have a question, in our packets, it appears to be there's a roster in our packets?
Yes.
And I, I'm just not following why there is a roster of members in, in here. Is there a reason for that?
I think that these are lists of people who signed up for events, and if they were Golden Ager's, that is next to their name, are you looking, talking about these?
Yes, that's what that is, right.
Gotcha.
Right, because they are not the-
Okay, very good, so-
So, this is what they, what the village provided you, so that you could reimburse, and-
We, everything that is highlighted is reimbursed.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Do you have highlights on yours, Alphal?
Yes.
Okay.
What is your, your question?
What do, oh gee, they have a lot of things going on.
Was it more than the $5,000? Or is that, is that your budget?
No, I, I don't think it would be more than, no, it's not more than $5,000, including everything, the Christmas party and events that we have gone out to see, stage plays that we supplement half of it.
So, are you a line item in the village of North Riverside's budget, or do you have a, a separate bank account?
Oh, no, it's Golden Ager's bank account.
It's a Golden Ager's bank account.
Yeah, it's a Golden Ager's bank account, that's where the checks go, right into the Golden Ager's bank account.
So, for the last couple of years, we've been asking for a little bit better information, and we thank you for showing us what you participate in. What we don't know is where our funds work within your events, so does your organization have other sources of funds? Do, do you always have reserves from what we grant that are carried over to the following year? That's what we're trying to identify. Are we overfunding your, your events?
Okay.
You know, that-
I understand now, yeah.
And that's something that we still don't, we still-
So, then what I should be giving you is also the listing of what is in the bank.
Right, your treasurer's reports, things like that.
Yes, yes.
How, how your money came in and how it was spent.
Yes.
If you have dues, what portion of the, the revenue that you use comes from dues? What comes from a grant like this? Do you get any grants from any other organization? And, you know, how is it spent? Or is it just carried over and are you building a nest egg? And if so, what's going to be done with that nest egg?
Okay.
So, that's, I think, what our Board is most, most interested in, and it's the kind of thing that we've asked those who have come each year, and this is the third time that this Board is not really getting the information that it requested.
I don't, I don't think any Board got that, because that's what they gave me, they didn't give me what you're telling me to do.
Right.
So, that's what we will do from now on, everything that we hand into the auditor, we will put one on the side so that we can have a list for you also.
Right.
Yeah, that, that would be good, because I'm assuming if I go through this roster here and look at all the highlighted names, 'cause you have $20, $20, $20, I'm assuming that if you add all that up and then total all these receipts, maybe you come pretty close to $5,000. I, I, but I, I did not, you know, go through everything here, and there really are no totals here. Right.
Right, you need to do totals, right, for everything.
And then, and then, like Supervisor said, maybe a financial statement from the bank to, to show what kind of assets-
Absolutely.
On your thing, you have a little blurb in your packet on the Thanksgiving feast, and the fee is either $15 or $17. Is it $15 if you're a Golden Ager? Okay.
So, it would, it would be $15 for us, Golden Agers. Okay, you want exactly what the auditor gives us at the beginning of the month.
I make a motion that we defer this till next month.
Yeah, I second, I'd like to see that information, and if you could bring it or turn it in to Supervisor before next month's meeting.
Okay.
I'd be in favor of that, I second that motion.
I appreciate you, Dolores, that you really do, you do in this.
Absolutely, absolutely, I understand that.
And going forward, this is what this Board needs. We need a little more, you know, accountability of it.
Yes.
You know, if we're giving away taxpayer money in the form of a grant, we want to make sure that it's going to a good cause, which Golden Ager's is, but we also want to make sure that it's wisely in, in the taxpayer, you know, for the taxpayer.
Yes, yes, well, we, I have no problem with that, because it goes right to the Golden Ager's, we do nothing but-
Right.
It's for the Golden Ager's.
I appreciate that.
So, I don't have a problem with that. So, when do we come back, June?
It would be the second Tuesday in June again.
June 11th, it was on his books.
Thank you.
But I think it would be important for you to receive the information.
Right, but I need to get the, the information from you the week before.
Before, yes.
Before we put together the packets, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And so, we have a motion and a second to defer consideration of the North Riverside Golden Ager's grant until June. All in favor of that deferral? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dolores.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item is the North Riverside Parks and Recreation Autumn Fest application. This is, you can see that we, once again, are being asked to fund directly certain of the vendors for activities that take place at that time, so it's a total grant of $1,275. And do we have anyone here from, I don't see anyone, from North Riverside Recreation?
Okay, because I have questions on this one, too.
Okay.
When I added up the invoices that were-
Presented?
Presented in here, I got the figure of $1,485, and they're asking for $1,275.
I make a motion that we defer this.
Okay.
And I, and I did it, you know, on my computer, so it wasn't just my adding that could be off.
I'll second the motion.
But I added 325, 860, and 300, and I got 1485.
Very good.
Maybe I was, let me just, and this. Yeah, that's what I got it.
Okay, yeah. 325, 625, and then, I see that the one thing is they're looking, they're only looking for the petting zoo, so you're counting the 650 and not the 860, right, on the third one?
Oh, okay, they're only, so the travel fee and the bulk feed, 50 pounds, is not-
Yeah, they've circled the 650.
Oh, okay, so that's where the difference is.
Do you see that on your copy?
Yeah, so that would be where the difference is, then. So, then we would get, okay, so, so since that's-
Is that correct, then?
That's correct, yeah.
Do you want to withdraw your motion to defer it, then?
Yes, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, very good, so what is your pleasure, then?
I make a motion that we approve this grant.
Second, oh, go ahead, Tim.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Drapka, second by Trustee Heilandbach, to approve the $1,275 grant to, for the North Riverside Parks and Recreation Autumn Festival. And now that it all adds up, any other questions or concerns? Then I will ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
The next grant is the American Legion Post 0488, and a lot of accompanying material. Is there anyone here from the post? Okay.
This is in regards to that memorial that they would like to put up, correct?
Correct.
They want to refurbish the memorial?
Yes.
Right, because they-
Lift it back up and get it supported.
In conjunction?
Well, so, so in conjunction with doing that, they were also moving, and I forget the name on it, but it's, it's actually in the online landmark this, this afternoon, but it was an old water trough.
Right.
That, they thought that they, because the pedestal for that had already, also sunk, so they built a new pedestal, and they went to move it, and it broke apart in the moving, but it was, apparently it was in sections, so it was put back together. They, the headline on it made it sound like, oh my goodness, it's destroyed, but they just, it was much heavier than they were anticipating. It was about, I want to say about, more than a third heavier than it was believed to be, and that was why one of the, one of the supporting straps snapped during the move, and so it shifted.
That water trough that's in the front, I've got that.
That water trough, that trough that's planted with flowers?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was moved, like they built another pedestal right next to it and moved it over.
Why is the American Legion doing that?
No, American Legion wasn't doing that, but the village, in conjunction with the restoring the Veterans Memorial, was also doing that other portion, and yesterday, the street was completely tied up with backhoes and, and, oh my goodness, it was quite a mess, traffic wise.
The entirety of that monument is, it's dedicated to a man who said, "No permanent monuments on public land in Riverside." Just saying.
Just saying, okay. Anyway, but that's not the issue now we're dealing with. The balance, I believe that this is more to the grant that we had been requested before, and I believe that when their representative was at our meeting at the time, he was encouraged to apply for more if there was more to be done to do this. So, last year, they applied for $3,000, correct? And then, and now they are asking for, oh, they got $2,000, I'm sorry, $2,000 in 2018, and now they are seeking another $2,000 for the completion of that project.
You know what, I make a motion that we approve this grant.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Heilandbach, second by Trustee Clark, to approve this grant, is there any discussion? Do you have something to say about it?
How much of the project did they complete last weekend? Is it, are they done with it? Did they-
I don't think so, no. I don't think they actually got, it was like, oh, well, we'll move this first so that we can do the other, and-
Okay, so they tied it-
If I recall correctly, the guy said, the gentleman that was here-
It's going to be done for Memorial Day, I think?
It's supposed to be done for Memorial Day, but he thought that the project was going to cost anywhere, if you recall, between $10,000 and $12,000. And we told, we encouraged him to come to, come to that to us. Now, my guess is, is that they, they got some publicity on this, am I right Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
They got some publicity, and they also got donations because of that.
Yes, right.
So, this is probably to finish it off, is my guess.
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
But, so, the village is, they said that they gave the village $11,000, presented the village with a check for $11,000 to pay for this, so part of the grant that we gave them was then turned over to the village to pay for this?
Right, right.
So, we're, we're paying the village? No, the American Legion is paying the village, we're paying the-
We pay the American Legion, and they're collecting the funds, but the village is actually doing the work. The American Legion does not have the wherewithal to actually move monuments.
So, we have a motion and a second, correct?
I have a motion and a second on the floor, if there's no other questions, I will ask the Clerk to call for the vote.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Okay, next up is the Riverside Brookfield High School grant, and this one is a safety grant. They are looking for $7,621.96, and that would include two ABD machines, one i, no, I'm sorry, 10 iTouch, 20 flexible- Um, twenty flexible posts, thirty-six inch flexible posts. Uh, four crowd control barriers, two heavy-duty sign bases, and three bullhorns. And all of the items, um, are shown on the attached. And again, because this is another taxing body, we would be buying these things directly if this grant is approved.
I, I have several questions on this.
We don't have anyone from R B here tonight, do we?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions as well. And, um, you said because this is another taxing body, but it wants, the, according to the grant, it wants them to, us to write that check to them.
And that would be, well, yes.
Well, they could provide a catalog.
You just wonder why they need ten, isn't that one i-touch a phone?
Yeah, I don't know what that, uh, yeah, see, that's...
And i-touch, it's, yeah, I don't know. I don't know, we don't have enough information.
Several questions again on this.
That's what, okay.
Make a motion that we defer till next month.
Yeah, each one of those is two hundred dollars, one of those i-touches, and it is an iPod touch. So, yeah, is that a motion to defer?
Yes.
I have a motion to defer this grant until somebody can be present next month.
I'll second it. I do have a question.
Yes?
So, our school's in town, one group will apply for a grant as R B H S, another group as R B H S. And I know there's different groups, and I know Hauser has several different groups. But, is there like a general heading we could put these under? Because, you know, R B H S is an umbrella organization, is getting lots of different grants. Ones to this group, ones to that group, ones to the other. Is there any way we could see that information kind of, um, side by side?
At the back of your book, you always do have a whole running list, yeah.
It's hard to bring them together, you know, best buddies.
Right.
You know, which, which groups where and that kind of thing, so...
Okay.
But they're all listed under R B H S.
And the same is with Hauser?
Uh, it all starts with, uh, yeah, same with Hauser, it all starts, it's, you know, the marching band, the cleanup, the drama program, pride, PTA, PTO.
So then maybe when we list this for offices only, maybe we could list all the grants under that heading. And it's more for their information to just say, R B H S, look, you're not the only, this isn't the only group at R B.
Yeah, they don't get, this is, uh, this is put in after the application comes in, so I understand what you're looking for though.
But, Tim, if you look in the back of your book, it lists all the grants from two thousand to two thousand nineteen. Oh, Cougars.
I'm aware of, um, I'm aware of that, but I'd just like to see the information consolidated, um, moving forward. Because how much have we given R, you know, do, do the police, does that flashing sign count? You know, I, I'm just wanting to see where the money, you know, what buckets they're going in.
Alright, I, we have a motion to defer till June. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, thank you. Riverside Arts Center is our next grant.
Somebody here in the arts center?
Hi, welcome. Are there questions regarding this? Oh, well, first off, um, we have a request from Riverside Arts Center for eight thousand three hundred dollars. Their budget is attached, their operational budget. You have a lot of material and actually, if you want to see, I have, we'll hold this more of other materials from them. Uh, if you'd like to see the full color materials that were delivered with the grant application. So what is your pleasure?
Um, I have some questions.
Okay.
Once again, I think...
Would you, would you please step to the podium, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
So you can be identified for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Camille Silverman, and I'm the executive director at Riverside Arts Center.
Okay, I'm confused what this grant is for. Because you give us a lot of information about the flex space and that you need to staff that. But then, under, when we ask you for a detailed description of how your organization would allocate the funding, you're talking about brochures, catalogs, uh, R E, operational budget, grant letter proposal, so...
So, um, so our, uh, our flex space has exhibits and workshops, um, and we use, and we promote those through, uh, brochures, catalogs, so a lot of our print material covers our, our flex space.
So this eighty-three hundred dollars would be going for print material?
Oh, let's see, provide detail on how your organization would allocate the funding from Riverside Township, award and attach information, brochures regarding event, plus as an attached budget information, a dividend budget information.
Well, I think that the, all those things itemized there are just, they use all the things that are attached.
Yeah, I think I was just writing the things that were attached, but we do advertise flex on those, but...
But it looks like this is for the flex space, because that's where the amount is listed in your material.
So I think I, I was listing, because I attached everything, so I was listing everything that I attached, the details.
So that's more than plural, too.
So I attached, I gave you the, your, uh, postcards, I put the catalogs that, um, Kim Pietrowski showed that was in the flex space. So I'm sorry, that's just like an inventory of what was attached in the grant.
Okay, so then what's the money going to be used for?
Uh, the flex space, and I did put that, I gave you a, an actual budget for the flex space.
Right, it's the second part there.
Yeah, so I did do a budget for the flex space.
Okay, so that's, um... So is this an additional eight thousand three hundred dollars according to, uh, because, oh, so you have already added our eighty-three hundred dollars...
I did, yeah.
Into the income before we got that approved?
Right.
Okay, um...
This is a, I guess, a proposed budget.
Okay, and what's a grant letter proposal? I mean, I mean, I know what it is, but are you paying somebody to do that?
No, I think, Mary Robb, I'm sorry, but I think that this was just an inventory of the items attached. And the, that the multi-page, the second item that looks like this, is the grant proposal.
Okay, alright.
That was just a little space, so I just kind of wrote down what I had attached or, or put in the packet.
No, it's fine.
And didn't we just give them, uh, some money for the children's tent?
That goes, that is raw.
Raw.
Oh, that's, so that's raw, different, okay, alright, that's what.
Yeah.
I do have a structural question about, uh, year after year grant in the eight thousand, nine thousand dollar range. At some point, does that stop being allocated out of the grants and go over to the town programs?
I think that when you look at the budget, that although it's a substantial grant on our part, it's only a small portion of their budget, so I don't think that we could claim it as a town program. Uh, I, it would, if it was a town program, we wouldn't have to go through the approval each time, I understand. But I think that we have too much of a separation between the township and the Riverside Arts Center to actually reclaim it to be a town program.
Yeah, it's just, you know, I'm not opposed to it at all, I, I think it's a wonderful, uh, thing to support. I'm just wondering if, if year after year grants is the best way to go for it? Because we could just pull it, you know, the next board could say, look, forgot it.
But maybe they wouldn't need the grant, or, you know, they would have something else and they might not need the grant, and then we would just be paying them.
Mm-hmm.
So...
So this actually gives accountability to, for how it's used?
Well, it gives accountability, we don't get to question the people.
So, so getting back to trustee Clark's question then, what is the money, the, the money that you're applying for? Because I saw the letter and it says, "What you did with the money in twenty eighteen." What are you going to do with the money for twenty nineteen? So, it, it goes through, I, I did attach the letter that it's, it's for the flex space, and then I did give you guys a budget. Um, the budget is for the flex space support. We want to hire a part-time staff manager, um, and I, and I wrote twelve dollars, uh, or twelve hours a week. Maybe I'm not seeing that, I'm sorry, where, where, oh, is it, manager works average at twelve hours a week? And so this, the space, um, we do, it's a, it's called Flex Space. Um, it was, it's, it's been underfunded and understaffed for quite a while. So, one of our staff people did leave, and we're trying to, um, bring in somebody, um, with, uh, curatorial and community and, um, some fundraising experience to, uh, make that, uh, space flourish. So, it, uh, holds a lot of, uh, school exhibits, it holds, um, workshops, and also holds a lot of, uh, local and national artist shows, so... Gotcha, I see it now, you want for the manager and for ceiling maintenance? Yes, yes, and I did, and I even attached a picture of our ceiling. Yes, you saw the picture, yep.
It's a great old ceiling.
I have a motion to approve this grant.
I will second.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Drapka, to approve the grant to the Riverside Arts Center in the amount of eight thousand three hundred dollars. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Blom, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lopford?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you so much. You're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming here.
Really helps when you're here. Alright, next item is the Riverside Township Lions Club, and I see Alex Galagos is here.
Good evening.
Good evening. So we have a request for five thousand dollars for a hot air balloon lift. And I think that everybody has some questions about this one.
Okay, I'm here to answer them, thank you for having me.
First of all, have you gotten any permission from the village to do this yet?
Yes, the village approved this earlier this month to, uh, give us a special events application. Uh, it was voted by the board, uh, on the second of May.
And this is in celebration of the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Riverside?
Correct, so as you may have read in the paper, a, uh, a committee was formed, a conglomeration of community organizations in town, um, to find ways on how we should celebrate the hundred and fiftieth. Uh, most organizations are simply revamping their existing things and themeing them out to have the sesquicentennial involved. However, something unique just was called upon to allow residents to get a bird's eye view, an aerial view, of the, uh, of a living legacy that we have, of the, uh, home set creation, the map. Uh, I mean, most people see it on the walls, and, and if you're lucky enough to fly over Riverside, you'll, you can see it from there. But, um, you know, this event was done in nineteen seventy-six, uh, for the bicentennial of the, of the nation. So to have an event like this again at the big ballpark, um, for, you know, residents who have, who have moved into town, to take advantage of this, would be something that was really spectacular.
So they did balloon rides in nineteen seventy-six?
They had a balloon in nineteen seventy-six, so, so yes.
And how many balloons were you planning to?
Two.
And are they handicapped accessible?
Um, at least one will be, that was one thing, one thing that we did want to make sure is that, uh, um, no one would be unable to enjoy this if they had some physical affliction of it. So, yes, we will have a handicapped accessible basket.
So this is for the village's celebration?
Um, well, of our, of our, celebrating our village, yes. This is not a village or Riverside event that, that the government is...
So the township is having a celebration as well?
Might want to see how this goes next year for years.
Well, we, we would want to do something different.
Sorry, sorry, trustee Clark, but I, I understand, I understand.
Or maybe the Lions Club could do this in conjunction with the township celebration.
If you think it's a good partnership and you like how this event goes, that certainly is a possibility. So, but you have a year, so...
That wasn't my point. Uh, my point was, you're doing it for the village, but you're asking the township to pay for it. Why wouldn't you do it with the township if you want the township to pay for it?
Um...
Village trustee guy goes...
Well, I'm not coming to you as a, as a village trustee, so, uh, I'm coming here as a lion. Um, I, I just never thought about having it as a township event. This is really more just for the residents, who are both village residents and township residents, to enjoy. So it really has nothing to do with the governmental entities.
In what way is the Lions Club, other than the sponsorship probably branded going to be?
Well, we will have the manpower out there to help, um, get the balloons in there, get the lines all straightened out, make sure it's, you know, crowd control, that sort of stuff. We will, um, you know, we're, we're on the ground, they're doing a lot of the labor.
How much are tickets going to be?
We don't know. If we get no grant money right now, we're looking at about twenty dollars per person. So family of four will be paying eighty dollars. Some families might find that affordable, some families might not find that so easy in their budget. So, the help from the township will help enable, um, you know, families of different economic means and of physical afflictions to, to enjoy this.
Is the Lions Club putting any money into this event? Do you have a budget for this?
We have no budget. This came upon us just a few months ago as we were, um, sort of roped into celebrating the, um, the event. We did re-theme the regatta as a sesquicentennial nautical parade. It's still the, the scuffed gross, uh, regatta. Um, but the funds that we raised for are for the blind and deaf. So when we have chicken dinner, we have the candy day, uh, those are the things that we're, we're celebrating for. But because we had the manpower and some other resources, we decided that we could put this together and in cooperation with the township, um, and approval from the village, you know, we can make this happen for our residents to enjoy.
So the Lions Club isn't putting, is anybody else besides the township putting in any money towards this event?
If someone wants to come up and, and give us money for it, we'll, we'll certainly take it, but no one has volunteered to, uh, to fork over any cash.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be against partnering with the Lions Club to have them join in our celebration of the township. But I, I feel it would be a little bit of a swerve for us to be spending money on the village's celebration when we're trying to budget ours. You know, my recommendation would be to come back and partner with us, not the village.
For next year rather than this year.
Right.
My, so my question on this would be, so, to get these two hot air balloons here, do you simply guarantee so many people would take advantage of it? And, or do you pay for them? And then, I mean, I don't see the breakdown of how, how the five thousand would be used. I know that you wanted to subsidize basically, or reduce the price of the ticket for the people. But if this five thousand dollars, let's say, ten dollars goes for every ride so that you don't have to charge twenty, but only ten, so you're looking at five hundred people actually lifting or...
Well, we, we purchase, we have a contract for two hours.
Okay.
We have the option to buy more time at that event. We won't know until that night what the winds are going to be, and this is a, an outdoor event, so...
Well, that's, that would be my other concern, how do you guarantee?
And, uh, I'm going to address your concern that you had on a prior, uh, issue in a minute. Um, so that night, we could buy more time. So, most likely, we'll, we will have a raffle for about three hundred tickets that will get those, a, a time slot in that, in that two-hour period. And we'll probably have a waiting list of other raffle tickets that we'll sell. Again, this is an outdoor event, this is supposed to be on July twentieth, but if we have rain, if we have, uh, you know, weather of any kind, high winds, anything, um, even if you have beautiful weather, but the, but the land is all soaking wet, um, we would have to change the date, so I'll ask that you take that into consideration as well then. It may not be on July twentieth because of what I just said.
So, go ahead.
I was wondering, okay, so this raffle, so you sell three hundred tickets? And of that, you have, I'm, there's only so much time, so maybe there'll be forty rides or something like that, or...
Um, I, I don't, I, three hundred people can go up in the air, up and down in, in two hours with the two baskets that we have.
Oh, they can?
Yes.
That's, that's a pretty big basket.
Well, not all at once, but they...
I know, no, but I, but I know, and, no, I understand that, but in two hours, okay?
I, I believe six people can fit in a basket each, in each ride. So they go up, they're elevated, they take their selfies or, or snapshots, whatever they want to do, and then come back down.
So they're about ten-minute intervals then?
Probably less, I mean, we're looking at probably like five-ish or so.
Okay, okay. That, I'm just, sorry, I'm trying to do the math here.
To load, you have five minutes to load six people in there, raise the balloon up, they take, so you're in the air for like a minute. they take, so you're in the air for like a minute?
Probably, probably longer. I mean, I'm not the pilot of the air balloon, so I don't have, you know, all the, but you're not up there for an hour, you're up there for a few minutes to enjoy the view and take whatever pictures you can. You know, this would be...
Well, if you said it was five-minute intervals, you have five minutes to load six people in there, have the balloon go up, be up there for a few minutes, which is three, and then you have one minute to bring them down and get the people out, and then you start the five minutes.
Okay. I mean, it may not be timed that way, but that's, that could be about accurate.
So, my question is...
It's a lot to do in five minutes.
Well, again, they're the experts. We hired a company to do this, so they're, you know, they're...
My question is, what is the five thousand for, then? I mean, is that, then, that's three, you know, twenty-five hundred per balloon? Is that what you want, the money?
Well, it's forty-nine hundred dollars for the contract that we have for two hours for two balloons.
What is it?
Forty-nine hundred dollars. Then we have printing costs for posters and, and raffle tickets. And if, again, if we decide to buy more time, you know, that's an option later as well.
So, the forty, so, four thousand nine hundred dollars is for the two balloons?
Correct. That will go to the company that we have a contract with, yes.
Okay. So, then, if we give you the four thousand nine hundred dollars for that, hypothetical, if we give you the four thousand nine hundred dollars, then these rides should be free then, no?
Well, they might be a dollar, you know, per ticket. I mean, we're not, you know, still charging twenty dollars, but they might be a dollar a ticket.
So, still that's three hundred dollars.
So, essentially, really close to free, but much more affordable than an eighty dollars for, for a family of four.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
Because we don't, we sold for raffle tickets and the cost of printing those things.
All right. So, instead, but the email says here, you, you want to sell the tickets for twenty dollars apiece?
If we had no funding from the township, that is the price that we're looking at.
Okay, so if you had funding from the township and gave you the four thousand nine hundred that you're looking for, all right, five thousand that you're looking for, then what was it, what would be the cost of the raffle, for the ticket, for the ride?
We could very well go down to a dollar per, per raffle ticket.
Why does, penny, or, I mean, I...
We could, we could, we could go to a dollar fifty for the 150th.
So, what's the consequence?
So, I'll say essentially, essentially free, or very, very cheap, let's put it that way.
So, you really basically don't want to charge people for this?
Well, not that I don't want to charge people, I mean, the company is going to charge us, so, I mean, we can't, you know, do it for zero, but if it could be very affordable for families to enjoy, not based on economic costs as to what families can afford it and what families cannot, then, you know, you take that, that factor out of the way, and then it's open to anybody in our village.
So, if we give you the grant, then it is free? It becomes free, essentially?
Well, maybe a dollar per ticket, but...
So, does this five thousand represent the cost of having the two balloons for two hours?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That, so it's, okay.
No other organization is putting in money at this point in time?
No.
No one else is?
No one else is? And the other events that are scheduled for the 150th anniversary of Riverside, who's putting in money for those?
Well, those are already budgeted and existing events for most of the other organizations. So, like, for instance, our Scuffy Regatta that we have, we've already planned that a year ago. We know it's going to cost us printing, we know we're going to, you know, sell...
Didn't we give you money last year for the banner?
No, you gave us permission to put a banner up.
Okay, all right.
And we'll be asking for that as well later on, but permission.
Permission, okay.
Can anybody in the township participate in this event?
Yes.
If it's from North Riverside or Parkfield?
Yeah, if they live in the township. If this panel feels that we should limit it to just the township residents, then certainly...
How are you going to know? Are you going to check their ID?
Well, no, what will happen is we will ask, well, no, we will ask them to, to enter a raffle, signing a registration form and a waiver, because the company doesn't, doesn't want a waiver, and send their stuff in. If they live in Chicago and, you know, they're not a resident of the township, they could be disqualified from, from being in that raffle. If they live within township limits, you know, that would make them eligible.
Explain the, the raffle again to me, like, are you, when you're talking about raffle, are you pulling names out of a hat, or is a raffle some, just a word that you're using in regard to...
Well, it would be names out of hat, essentially. So, what we'll have is, we'll have a registration form that people can download from their home. They'll sign it, they'll fill it out, it's a waiver as well. They'll mail it in, and then we'll, you know, have some, a few hundred envelopes, I would imagine, and we'll go through them. And the ones that get picked, the first three hundred or so, you know, they would be the ones that, that could, that win, that, that ride.
Okay, if it's, if it's free, though, then, essentially, okay, a dollar a ticket, why wouldn't you, and this is your event, I'm just tossing out questions, don't, no offense here.
Sure.
But if, if, if it's free, then, or a dollar a ticket, why don't, and this thing is that the balloon rides are going to be available from ten until noon on, on July twentieth, why wouldn't you just let anybody and anybody just come, stand in line, and when the two hours are up, that's it, you're done?
Well, the, the company does want waivers signed in advance, so we, we do want that in advance. We do want to make sure that the people who are in line, if you would, are residents of the township, especially with the concern that we just raised a minute ago. So, so that's why, I mean, some, that, that's why. That's most logistical, logistical way to go about doing things.
So, you're on a committee to plan events for this 150th anniversary? Is that right?
Not necessarily plan events, but plan how we should celebrate, which does include events, yes.
Was that, were you appointed by the village to be on that committee?
I was drafted to, drafted to be part of it, yes.
You were drafted by the village?
Well, it's not only a village sanctioned thing as much as it was a suggestion, you know, that we, that we do need to do something and come together as a community to celebrate our 150th.
So, what role does the village have in this? Since they didn't appoint you, they're not funding this, you know?
I don't know what role they had. I guess being very suggestive on, on us doing something and supportive, you know, so we do have special events.
But not supportive?
Well, when we have special events that come up before the village board to give cooperation, so, so in that sense, you know, they're being supportive.
But they're not supporting it financially?
No, no, there is no dollar from the village of Riverside budget to...
Have you asked the village for money to help support this?
I have not. Considering the budget that, that we saw last year, or out ended last year, they're not in a position to, to do anything with this one.
Trustee Hallenbach, did you have some questions?
I have no questions, I'm ready for vote.
Okay.
Should I stay here or be...
Well...
Trustee Clark?
I have one more question, and I, I guess, this whole, the raffle concept. So, if, if you enter this raffle, you pay money to get into it, correct? Or do you only pay if your name is drawn? That's where my, where my disconnect is here.
Um...
So, let's say you got five hundred, five hundred applications, and you can only do three hundred. Did each of those applications come with money in the envelope?
Well, they should write a check.
Okay.
If you want to accept cash, we don't want any cash going through the mail.
Okay.
So, they would write a check.
Right, okay.
And if they don't win, you're asking me if they don't get picked?
Yeah, I'm wondering, does that, I mean, does their very entry help to subsidize this, or is it only if your name is drawn that your money is taken?
Well, I guess for anything that's over three hundred, we will put them on a waiting list, because, I mean, there could be a family that, that has an emergency that comes up, or, let's say that we don't, we can't do it on the twentieth, and we've got to push it back later on, and a family can't make it. So, they would, whoever is after three hundred would essentially be put on a waiting list.
Okay, okay.
Here's...
I, I like, I like the concept. It's, it's really good, it's a good idea, outside-the-box thinking. I guess where my hesitation is coming from is probably number one, trustee Lumber, you said something about doing the event in conjunction with our 150th event, specifically because the 150th event going on this year is for Homestead and not necessarily the village of Riverside. So, that's, that's number one. Number two, I don't see like a clear plan for receipts, or if you, I, I have your email, we got your email, I have the form, that's all good, but everybody else, you know, and with the other grants have receipts and a whole plan of attack on what's going to go down and how this is going to play out and stuff like that. I, I feel like with some of the questions that we, we've discussed here, I feel like some of it is, and maybe I'm wrong, but I get the impression that we're talking about planning the event here right now in the past ten minutes, you know? I, you know, just, there's things, you know, just topics and changing and ideas flowing and stuff like that, which is fine, I don't have a problem with ideas flowing, but this is your event, and you should have a plan, and a Plan B, and a Plan C, and contingencies, you know what I'm saying? So, and this is my opinion. So, although I do like the idea, I don't want to discourage the idea from going forward, whether it be this year or next year in conjunction with, with our township 150th, I, I just, that's, that's where I'm sitting right now as to how I feel about the grant.
I thought I explained it contingencies, but...
Okay.
Okay, point taken.
If this is really the Frederick Waugh Homestead Society's 150th...
It's not, no, the Frederick Waugh Homestead is not their event, this is a...
But is it their, is it their 150th celebration of the planning of Riverside?
Yes, well, it's Homestead's plan of Riverside.
That's the celebration.
And Homestead Society does, of course...
And why aren't they putting in money for this? Have you asked?
Because it's not their event, they're, they're not the only entity that, that is involved with this, that's why.
Sure, I, I would suggest that regardless of how this vote turns out, that the Lions Club comes back with our 150th anniversary and try to figure out a way to partner up on, on our event next year, I think it'd be a great idea.
Well, I appreciate that invitation. I would also suggest you might want to see how this one goes before you put your name on it. This might be the experimental one.
This is what I would like to see. First of all, I don't want to confuse our events for next year with this event. You know, this year, it's apples and oranges to me. What I'd like to see, Alex, is we defer this till next month, and you come back with a more formal plan and a budget, so we can flush this out a little more, and, you know, see if somehow in that time you can raise some money, you know, other money for this. And then also, in that budget proposal, is to show how the township is going to get some signage and recognition for this. So, I, that's, my motion would be to defer this to next month, with, to let them flush this out a little more.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Clark, do I or a second, to defer this until the June meeting with a little better detail?
I, I second.
I have a motion and a second to defer till June. Any further discussion? Then, all in favor of deferral, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
I'll vote aye, because I'm the, I'm the fifth vote here, so, I'll vote, we will defer this until next month, if you can come back with a little fleshed, more fleshed out proposal. Thank you.
We'd like to see a budget, too. We're speaking, I'm speaking for myself, I don't...
No, a budget and more like, like a plan, a receipt, the company, you know, that you're going with, that type of stuff, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Proof of insurance.
Yeah, all that, all that, all that stuff, you know, the, the company, the receipt, this is what it's going to cost, the, how the raffle is going to be laid out, if we get the, if we give the money to you, then it's going to be a dollar a ticket, if we don't give you the money, it's going to be twenty dollars a ticket, the whole, the whole shebang, you know?
Okay.
And then how we would be recognized.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is the North Riverside Little League.
I'm ready to hear about this.
Yes. Afraid to come up after all that.
Quite all right.
All right, we have a, we have a request for a three hundred dollar grant for a sponsorship for the North Riverside Little League. It would include a display banner and our logo on their website, and you are?
Sonny Thury, I'm a North Riverside Little League board member.
Thank you for being here tonight. Are there any questions regarding this?
This is for a banner?
No, that's where, there, there would be a banner that's basically displayed in the outfield of all the ball fields, basically in recognition of your sponsorship. The money itself goes for concessions, umpires, uniforms, equipment replacement, all sponsorship money goes into a general, general fund and allocated as needed.
So, we're not sponsoring really like a team with our name on the back of their t-shirts?
It would be a little late for that, wouldn't it? Aren't they already?
It is, and we, as a board, we, we discuss that, and I know that's how it's been done at times in the past. What we found is that the kids really get a thrill out of their names, being on the back of the jerseys, which is why we've kind of moved to the banners in the outfield, letting everybody know, these are the sponsors, these are the people that kicked in, and these are, you know, these are the reasons that they're here, but the kids really get a, they get a kick out of seeing their names on the back of the jerseys.
All right, I make a motion to grant this application to North Riverside Little League for three hundred dollars.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Hallenbach, to grant the requested three hundred dollar award to the North Riverside Little League. Any discussion?
All I'm going to say is, you know, we like to see our name on the back of the jerseys, too. Tell, tell Anthony that I said that.
The next time we get township shirts, your name will go on a trustee.
Point taken.
All right, would you please call the roll? Clerk Blough?
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hahnbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lumber?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for staying.
And finally, Boy Scouts of America, you've been very patient.
Hi, thank you. Tim Strudeman with the Boy Scouts, Pathway to Adventure Council.
Am I missing something?
That's what I was just going to say.
Well, if you note, it says that they've put all the information, but they reformatted it so it was more readable. So, the second page of this grant application basically has all of the questions that our grant application would have, but it's formatted differently.
Yeah, I apologize, I, I could not fit what it was that I was trying to say into the documents, so I, I took liberties to put it on to letterhead and, and just put the exact same questions and detail that you were looking for into this document.
And who are you, you're Tim?
My name is Tim Strudeman, yes.
Okay, Tim, this is a reminder, but on the second page of your reformatted...
Yes.
Reformatted thing, on the fourth line down, it says the Scouts BSA Troop Twenty-Four in the will be the Blast Into Scouting.
My apologies.
Could you clarify that for me?
So, this fall, the main scout membership recruitment drive delivered to the Pathway to Adventure Council in conjunction with the Riverside Community Scout Units, Cub Scout Pack Twenty, Twenty Four, Cub Scout Pack Thirty-One Twenty, and Scouts BSA Troop Twenty-Four will be attending this, the Blast, or participating is probably the word, participating in the Blast Into Scouting campaign. In other words, all the scout units will have the opportunity, well, not the opportunity, will, will take advantage of the available resources that the council has to support scout involvement and recruitment, more specifically recruitment.
So, Mike, I have a question. We have a, the Indian Guides and Princesses, we give grants to, and what they do is they take the money and give it back to the local groups. What this grant does is gives it to the regional group, is that correct?
Right, so, the Pathway to Adventure Council stretches from the Chicago Evanston Line to Berryton, to downtown... uh, Barrington to down the tri-state, out to Downers Grove and then out, uh, around the south side of Chicago and into Munster, Indiana, and then all the Chicago, city of Chicago. So, and, and we are in the Voyager Trace or the Western Districts, and that's what I represent. I'm the district executive for the Voyager Trace District, which is, uh, Westchester to Willow Springs, Berwind to Bridgeview.
Right, none of those towns are in Riverside Township.
No, they're not, but nonetheless, the, so, right, uh, this isn't a grant specific to, uh, to Riverside, this is a, a, a request for, uh, funds for, um, all of our efforts council-wide to bring youth into the program.
I'm just uncomfortable with a grant money going out to a, a regional group. Um, I wish you would structure, personally, I wish you'd structure the grant differently and so it would come back to the local troops for them to use in their recruiting and their efforts. Uh, I'd like our township money to be spent in Riverside Township. Um, you know, if we're giving you two thousand dollars, that, that, those local troops could really use that money. Um, so I'm not in favor of this grant as it's structured. I am totally in favor of giving money to the Boy Scouts of America, but I want it to be a pass-through back to our local troops so that they can decide on how to use the money. And when I, I brought this up, this will be my third time bringing this up. Uh, I voted for it every time, but I just don't think I can anymore. I would like to see it structured to where our troops are getting the money.
Has this changed? Has this, cause I, no, it hasn't changed to me.
No, we've had this, this discomfort level each year and we were assured in the past that you would have the focus on the local recruitment and all and, you know, the, the questions have been answered in such a way so that, oh, you have this many participating in this community and you're looking to increase that by a certain percentage and so forth. Um, but we've always had that issue with this particular thing because of the way the financial thing in, in your, your council is structured.
The financial thing?
Well, the, the way that this is structured, that it's not the local troops that come to us, but it's the, the regional, um, the, the whole council. And, you know, the, the board, this board at least has always had a little bit of a problem with that structure.
Were you there last year?
I was not.
No, it was someone else.
So I'm new to my position, but I'll see.
Yeah, right, that's what I, that, that, I, I know, I don't, you don't look familiar to me, but I, I remember, yeah, and I remember what trustee Lumper said.
You mentioned his name earlier today when we spoke.
Uh, Man, Manny Carrer, I believe is.
I think it was, yeah.
So, so when we have the Prairie Trail Federation, that's the Regional Indian Guides and Princesses, the local tribe comes, applies for the grant, uh, they say we're gonna use it to rent space, we're gonna put a banner up and we're, we're subsidizing our, the local group in their efforts. It goes through the, over the, the Federation, but then they draw off of that. So I, I would vote wholeheartedly for a grant structured that way.
Is there any way that you can go back and change that to make that seem that, to make that done that way?
So, so I don't know that we're too far away from that or too different from that. I mean, the idea is that we support all the local units, um, the, the, those that are here in Riverside. Um, and it's not just for, uh, this activity, this is just kind of earmarked or surfaced as, um, the event that we're, um, we're, we're presenting. But, but there's training, there's events that take place that the scouts go to that are not here in this township that they, but they participate in, whether it's at Bemis Woods or it's at Vulcan Quarry or it's at, uh.
So if you have a camp, if you have a camp, the local troop could use that, those funds to give a scholarship to a kid who couldn't go. Those are the kinda uses that, that I'm comfortable with. You know, if, if the local troop had a kid who can't go to a, you know, if the camp's a four, four hundred dollar charge and he can't go, that's what I'd like to see our money being used for.
Yeah, you've got, what, you've got like four troops here in Riverside Township?
I mean, hyper local.
Could be Riverside, Riverside, uh.
Yeah, I've, I've stated Riverside and North Riverside, because there are kids that participate from Riverside and North Riverside.
So you got three or four troops?
There are two packs and one troop.
So if, so what trustee Lumper's saying, which I would agree with, if we gave you the three thousand dollars to be earmarked specifically to then divide that three thousand by three, so a thousand dollars each to go to each one of the troops in Riverside Township. You know what I'm saying?
Sure, sure.
I don't think you can do that though, can you?
Uh, that, that would be a request that they would be making themselves, I'm here on behalf of, of the council itself.
Yeah.
So they do have their own fundraising abilities and they do maintain their own.
If you probably attended their pancake breakfast, as have I, and wreath sales or whatever else they do. So, uh, and I think your, your ask of, of like scholarships or camperships as we do that, um, i- is a council offering. So the council owns summer camps and they are not here in Riverside or in Chicago, in fact, they're in Michigan and Wisconsin. And, uh, the, uh, the council subsidizes, uh, youth that cannot attend those, those, those camps. So there are instances that, and, and again, I, I've just called out this, um, offering or this event activity um, as part of our fundraising approach, but, uh, but, but there's a variety of things that we do um, that I spoke of, you know, as it relates to the camps and the camperships, the trainings that we do for youth and adults, um, the local events, whether it's at, as at Bemis Woods, Vulcan Quarry or any of the others that the, the scout units in this area attend. And all those are, are supported, provided, um, developed, uh, by the, the council.
So, so if they wanna go to Vulcan materials, you're the one that, uh, they have to go through you to get that shirt going? Do they have to go through you to?
Not absolutely, but it is a day, uh, an exclusive or a specific day that they, uh, all the scouts in the area uh, are able to attend together, yeah.
Okay, and then scholarships, do you, you know, let's say.
Does it cost anything for the kids to go on these trips?
Um, well, for instance, right, there's a nominal fee of five dollars, I think it is, for pins and, and maybe a badge or a patch that, that they're given to, to attend the Vulcan.
But you charge these kids dues, I would guess, am I right?
Right, they pay membership dues to participate in their, their units. But, but, but that, that money doesn't go to the council. That goes to, there, and so that's thirty-three dollars a year. Uh, and, and then it's, and then there's an additional insurance fee of three dollars. So that's on a per person basis, whether, um, leader or scout.
So what, what I'm driving at here, and I'll make it brief, is the local scouts have to go through, you, you provide them with trips and camps and.
Opportunities.
Opportunities for them to participate.
Yeah.
And that's what this three thousand dollars does.
That's correct.
Okay.
But is it going to all the Riverside Township residents or is it going to the whole regional? The way that their structure is set up, there's, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, is, is their structure is set up as that their local troops go through the regional council. The regional council gets a bulk amount of troops together and it probably is cheaper for them in the long run and they also have a camaraderie of their groups together.
Right, so that's, that's probably a good way to look at it is the idea of camaraderie or association uh, of, of scouts participating in, in unison, so that's what we're looking to do. We're, uh, so you could, you could do something like what the guides do and support, um, you know, sort of one, one-on-one or one-dimensional, but this is that, that you're, what the scouts are is, uh, uh, skills, uh, uh, a leadership, uh, the opportunity to advance, uh, in life through, um, through the scout law, the scout oath as part of their experience, um, to grow and gain experience.
So how, is your term like one year, cause every year we have this conversation, the next year it's, new guy shows up with the same application, uh, asking for the same thing, for the same money. We're kinda having the same conversation over and over. Um, and we, I'm strongly asking and suggesting that maybe you write a note to the next guy saying, "Structure the grant to the local groups," cause I, I'm not gonna vote to spend money outside of our township.
Okay.
I'm just not, I just.
You know what, I appreciate that, and I, I was, just as you were about to say that, I was thinking the same thing, that we need to make a note of your, um, consideration.
And, and maybe also, I mean, we have a, other clubs that come back and say, "This is how we spent the money." So, you know, you spend three thousand dollars, if we can then trace that money back, then we would feel comfortable. But if it's just going into a pot and it's being spent, uh, you know, if it's, you know, I just need to see it benefiting township residents, those are our constituents. You know, the Barrington's not, so.
Trustee Lumber, would it, would it, would it be, uh, would you be agreeable to deferring this vote and, and allowing me to have somebody from the local unit come in and speak, uh, in conjunction or in, in partnership with me?
Personally, I'm one out of five votes, I'd, I would like to see a, a different grant. Start, I mean, you just apply for it again. Uh, you can get the copy of the Prairie Trail Federation grant, how they did it, but, and again, I'm just one vote and I'm not, I'm not the leader, I'm, I'm probably a minority.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know if that's a strategy you'd wanna pursue at this point.
No, but I mean, I would love to see the troops here in Riverside Township grow, I really would. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna give the three thousand dollars to you, I would, I would agree with what trustee Lumper said, I would, rather than have that three thousand going to Barrington, which, which somebody you just tossed out, or you just tossed out, I'd love that, that three thousand go to the local troop over here, or the one in North Riverside, or whatever, you know what I mean?
Understood.
Yeah.
And what about, create, it says create a girls' link scout, is that something you're gonna do this year? Or is that?
We've been, so, so the, the scouts, the Boy Scouts of America, which is the overarching brand, um, have been welcoming, uh, uh, both boys and girls to scouts, Cub Scouts for a couple of years. And as of February first, um, girls too are walking to the scouts program, the, the eleven to eighteen-year-old.
Okay, February first of this two thousand nineteen.
That's right, so there are units that have developed and, and Riverside is, is interested in, in doing the same. So I've been working with the, the troop there on that effort, that initiative.
Well, I would be willing to defer this to next month and if they restructure this so it helps the Riverside and North Riverside troops because I think we all feel that the, our, you know, this taxpayer money and it should stay in the Riverside Township.
I can give you the, um, contact information of the guy from the Prairie Trail Federation. He'll, he'd be more than happy to talk to you about the wording that pleases us, so to speak. If that would help.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to defer?
I second.
Was that a motion?
Uh, it wasn't a motion, but I can make it a motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, right? Trustee Drucka, to defer this until June with, with a restructured, uh, grant, uh, application.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, all in favor of that deferral, say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion is carried.
Thanks for waiting so long, I really appreciate it.
And my compliments to your son who's been perfect and sat here very patiently.
Sorry, I'm mistaken.
If they, um, come back next month and they have little, we should take them first.
Right.
You know, that's what.
Right. Okay. If we can continue then, we are through with grants and we'll move on to item B of the new business, which is, um, the decision as to whether we want to sponsor another township sponsored trip to the Illinois State Fair this year. We have, uh, requested, we were not pleased with our last bus company, so we've worked with, uh, North Riverside Recreation to find out who they use and who they would recommend. So we have two, uh, proposals that are like eighteen hundred, roughly eighteen hundred dollars each for the day's bus ride and we just tend to charge a nominal fee so that it's affordable for the township residents. Um, and we were thinking of doing this on the second Saturday of the month, uh, which I believe is the tenth of August. Let me just double check that.
Yeah, it's the tenth.
It is, yeah.
I make a motion that we go forward with the annual now, third annual, uh, Illinois State Fair Riverside Township trip.
I second it.
I have a motion by trustee Drucka, second by trustee Heilenbach, to go forward with a, um, the third annual township sponsored trip to the Illinois State Fair. And since that will involve some expenditure, click, Lumber, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drucka?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lumper?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilk?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. All right, onward. I gave each of you a set of my notes, but just, uh, to let you know what's been going on, we have new phones as of yesterday late afternoon, we're still learning to use them. However, um, we've decided to look into consolidation. You've all noted that we spent, spent an awful lot on telephones. This way we've brought it all under one umbrella with our internet and our fax and our phones. Plus we were able to add another line for the mental health board and although there will be some costs in the, um, in the installation process, then our monthly bill is actually going to go down. So, um, we also have added the feature that we will now have voicemail, which we have never had. And, uh, we have the ability, we do get a lot of calls that are mistakenly, um, come to us, but they're intended for the village or for the assessor's office and we now have the ability to actually forward those calls rather than just give them the number and tell them where to call. So, um, we've got some, some additional features and we're all learning, so give us, uh, give us a little time before you criticize, but hopefully we won't lose too many calls. Um, so anyway, we will, um, the elevator line is still a work in progress because although that one was installed first, they only went so far, then we had to wait for the elevator company and now the elevator company says that's not a strong enough signal when it's, you know, voice over internet, whatever. So it'll get worked out. Um, physically, uh, I'll defer much of this report, but the mental health office is just about ready for business. Phone's installed, furniture's in place and they're going to be, um, coming in as a team, the organizations that will be manning that and, uh, they hope to start in about mid-June.
Uh, is that, uh, room four over there?
It'll be room three, right, this is four. Yes, that's room three. So the conference table is going to stay there, it's moved to over a little bit. Please take a look at what we've set up, we've managed, uh, within the, well within the budget that the mental health board set for furnishing it. Um, we put in a, a desk that's lockable, um, we're also, uh, there's a filing cabinet, chair, floor mat and then, uh, the phone and we're, we still have one more item that they've selected of a printer, copier, fax, all of that good stuff, scanner, and, um, that's gonna be another hundred dollars. And again, it's all still within the budget, so that will be about ready to go. Um, in communications, we now have somewhat of a Facebook presence. Jennifer is still the one who's posting all the stories to it, but she's picking up on news that relates to us, um, also and, and posting things on Facebook for us. Uh, we also, um, hope to have a newsletter out in early June. Hopefully, we'd like to get that out before the shredding and bike collection day, although we've already announced it in the last newsletter, so if it doesn't get out exactly in time, we plan to do some advertising and, uh, posters and such for that event as well. Um, but we're also, uh, going to wanna feature some stories about, um, what's made possible through our grants and not just grin, grip and grins with the big check. So hopefully, um, there are some stories to be told. The Veterans Memorial refurbishment is in progress, for example, and the Best Buddies Grant last year helped to establish a chapter at Hauser, which in fact won the, like, the new chapter of the year award. Um, cause they, they've become very successful. Uh, the website banners are also being customized, um, we have some, some were sent to us. We had some recommendations on how to fix the language and the, and the photos. Um, basically right now we're using some, uh, standard photos, but as things happen, we can start adding pictures that are more, uh, particular to us. that are more particular to us. We did have a surprise in the building this month, as I think I let you all know. We had a male raccoon make his way into the attic and then into the small storage room that's near the assessor's office. We discovered it because there was a, it smelled like a zoo there, and so he was a very fragrant animal. He managed to come through the area that previous critters had come through, but we got him removed right away, but we still have some damage to repair on the building, because he came in, he managed to tear off a downspout, pull away the, the gutters, and of course, everything's copper, and not just copper, but fancy, so we're waiting for some of the, some of the repair people to give us some estimates. I did check on the insurance, whether there's coverage for it, because I would do it at home, and not for animal damage unless it results in some water damage because of the hole that he made. So, we're working on that. But the, in the meantime, the repairs from the pipe break are, should be happening soon. We were expecting the painter to come in early this week. He hasn't shown up yet, so it must have been overtime on another project, but we, it's somebody that we've worked with before, and it was approved by the insurance company. So, that should be restored soon, and we did get, while we were getting the bids for that, we got bids for some of the other rooms in the building for painting. I'm not, not pulling the trigger on any of that yet, because some of it will be a little bit more expensive. We, I did reach out to some window treatment companies to see if we can't improve the acoustics with drapes. Windows are too narrow and not enough space beyond them for the drapes to open properly when we want them open, so they're recommending roller blinds that would be fabric. I need to get some expert opinions on how much sound management that will do before, and I don't have any firm prices yet, because they did all the measuring. One, only one company has responded. We reached out to four, and only one has come in. Same thing was with painters. We reached out to four, we only got two. It's, everybody must be doing very well and very busy, because they don't come out.
It's May.
Well, I mean, this was even earlier, so, anyway. Then trustee Luffer, I'll let him speak to this, but we may have, we've made a proposal to the farmer's market that, that might, might be more palatable to both the township and them, in order to get some fresh produce to our people who get our food pantry. And if you have any questions, I can answer those, and then we can go on to trustees' reports.
I do have a question. You're talking about featuring things we do. Is there any appetite on this board to do some PR, some outreach, maybe hire a part-timer, maybe, you know, have a PR intern? You know, there's lots of people in town who would like to get the experience on a resume before they go back to the workforce. Kind of helping Jen with Facebook posts, kind of coming up with a cohesive message that we have, and then reaching out to the community. I really think we need to bullhorn what we're doing here, so more people know what we're doing, and we can, and reach more people.
Well, I will say that I think what we've been doing so far has been a vast improvement, because we had 10 applications for grants, and granted, not all of the, you know, many of them have been deferred, but certainly, we get a big response, because now people know, oh, they give grants, and they, they're finding us. Same thing with Nurses Closet has had a big uptick, so every little bit does help. I would like, I think most of that could be done in-house. If there's something you think that we're doing that we're not publicizing enough, just tell me, and we'll, we'll work on getting stories out on that, those particular things. It'd be great to help an intern, but we really don't have the space right now, especially if we're gonna have another, another office right outside our office now, so. But certainly, that's something I would, I would love to see us, you know, always put out press releases about new things that we do, but a lot of it is just enhancement of things that we've done. So, it's, you know, we haven't, I haven't felt that we had a big story to tell yet. We, we have already gotten splashes, you know, for our website being better, and gotten compliments about the newsletters and so forth, so.
There's one thing, I'll reference my trade association again. What we're doing is providing press support for members. So, what we could do, what the township could do, is provide press support for the Best Buddies. So, we could write a press release, help them write that press release, help them get the word to their people. So, we, we just, you know, piggyback on their efforts, and they piggyback on our efforts, and it's like the Wall of Balsam commercial, where if we can start giving some of these local groups, you know, like a wrestling club, they're not gonna have any resources to write press releases or get word out about the partnership with township. But if the township could then provide that, it would.
Right. Which is why I'd like to, in our newsletter, to start doing the stories more about, not so much that we gave a grant, but what was made possible through it. And that's exactly what we're trying to do. I want to reach out to those groups and say, okay, how'd you spend the money, and, and do you have some pictures from your event, so that we can start promoting that more.
I have two comments. One, Tom, is I don't think we can provide an intern for Jen. Just, like, here's Jen, here's your intern.
I don't, I don't mean it would be providing Jen an intern. It would be, it would be providing us an intern to help do things like Facebook posts. You know, we should, every, all of us should have a feature on it. The more outreach, the more you push the message out there in different manner, the more it comes back to you. So, yeah, I think it's great what we're doing, and I think we can do more. And if having that intern, maybe even if it's, there's a stipend to it, maybe that would help. I, we've seen a huge uptick in member satisfaction with, with helping them with their reach out. So, I think the township would see a huge uptick in partner satisfaction if we help them with their outreach.
Well, to, you know, I think promotion is good, you know, as long as it's done in the right way. But I also think if we're, before we do that, we need to have kind of a strategic planning meeting, so we're not all over.
I feel like we're going off agenda here, point of it, trying to figure that out.
Right, yeah, that's what, so, right.
Yeah, I just want to sound out the board and see, maybe, you know, maybe couple it with that, the celebration meeting, you know, just kind of get that out there, and kind of see what bubbles to the surface. And if something does great, we pursue it. If not, you know, we just keep going in-house.
Okay. We do have that on the agenda, so we can, to schedule such a meeting, and we can set the agenda for that meeting then, so. All right, trustees' reports. Trustee Clark?
We didn't hear about the food pantry.
Oh, the food pantry, oh, okay. Well, I was gonna let, okay, I will, so trustee Luffer contacted me and said, okay, so the breakdown in the past was that the farmer's market wanted us to have an individual at the farmer's market to redeem those vouchers for the vendors. But that would happen at the end of the time. It, you know, I mean, there was a very, very thorough, and I revisited that note, it was a very thorough note complaining about how uncooperative the township was, which I will make note. It was because a predecessor of mine had done the, the contact, and was the only contact with them, and was very negative about sending anybody over there. So, you know, I don't want to revisit that. However, the problem is that, you know, somebody needs to redeem that, and they didn't want to put the vendors out to have to contact us. The proposal was, how about if we set up basically a bank for the farmer's market? We say, here's, you know, we hand out the vouchers to our food pantry people, and then we give them, the farmer's market, a bank, so the vendors can come to the people organizing the farmer's market to redeem those vouchers at the end of the day. They, the, the farmer's market returns the vouchers to us. We see, oh, you've put out that much of the money, we replenish the bank for, for the future. So, I've extended that proposal to the young lady who's in charge of that. Yes, we just had this discussion yesterday, and she, she was reaching out to her boss, to the director of Parks and Rec. So, I haven't heard back yet, but I'm going to try to promote that as a possibility. And that we can do right out of the food pantry money. We have, we have some cash there in its own fund, plus the township already budgets a certain, I think it's $6,000 that we have in the budget, should the food pantry run short, that we would contribute to the food pantry. So, I mean, the, the funds are earmarked for that there already, and so I, hopefully, they will find that to be a possible solution.
Okay. I just want to mention this. The Riverside Presbyterian Church, which is down at the corner of Berry Point and Scottswood, gives out free produce now on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, I believe from 10 to 4:00, and it is open to anybody. There's a cart outside the church door, and you can just walk up and take what you need.
Wow.
They, they have an abundance of fresh produce.
So, with this.
And that is open to anybody who needs it.
That's good to know. We will make our food pantry people aware of that. We'll put in a note.
Great, thank you.
Okay. And is there a certain, I'm sorry, is there a certain time of day, or should I contact the church to find out?
I believe it's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, from like 10 to 4:00, but I would contact the church.
Will do.
Her name is Linda, that works in the office.
Okay.
Or I can send you the info too, if you want.
And the idea would be if it's successful, and the participants like it, after the farmer's market, maybe team up with Tishler's and Riverside Foods to continue it, so.
Voucher system like that. Riverside Foods would be a natural, because we already have, like, a running account with them. If, if the janitors have to run over for supplies, they just take it, and then they keep a record, and they bill us periodically.
Right. Peter, the owner, would, is more than happy to participate.
Okay. All right, so that's the work in progress. That is the extent of my report tonight. Trustee Clark, did you have anything to report?
Seniors are going well. We did our senior social last Wednesday, where they just came in for lunch. We had sliders from Montcastle for lunch, which they all seemed to enjoy. And then our outing, we went to Tea Room and Downers Grove. We did not have good attendance for that, unfortunately, because of the five people that did attend. Everybody had a good time. Next month, in June, they, for the senior lunch, they wanted to do a baby shower for the exercise instructor, so we will be having a little baby shower for him.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Drapka, do you have anything?
No report.
Trustee Hylmbach?
Good evening. I'll make it brief. You do have your packets in here. Last month, I discussed the texting program that we're gonna be starting up at the high school. That meeting was postponed till the middle of this month from last month, so I really have no update on that. As supervisor Wilt stated, our community service person is going to be starting here in the township hall. I want to thank supervisor Wilt for all her hard work. That should be by the middle of June. Last month, I told you that MAMI was training some of our police officers for them to be certified in mental health situations. That was very well attended. We were told 45 officers attended the conference over three days at Brookfield Zoo, and it was well-attended, and I'm sure that it was 45 officers. I thought that was really good. WSSRA, which is the special recreation, I do have some numbers. They had 29 people that were, took advantage of our program, where we pay for half the cost of a, of a program with WSSRA, and half the cost of their transportation to get there, if they need transportation. 29 people, 59 programs, and that was the first quarter that it was done. They're very excited, WSSRA, of how well this program started out, and we are as well. And that concludes my report.
Excellent news. Thank you.
Tim, what does MAMI stand for again?
National Alliance for Mental Wellness.
And I told several people about the program at RV, and they were all very excited to hear about that.
Yeah, we're excited about it too. It's just that, you know, we're taking these steps. It's not gonna begin until the fall anyway, so. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of steps that would have to take place, and the guy that has the software had a family emergency, that's why the meeting got canceled. So, they've made it for this. We have representation from the board. One of our board members is gonna attend that meeting at the high school, and so it, I'm looking forward to giving you continued progress on that.
Yeah, great. That's why I think it sounds great.
You know, one thing I would mention is with the tragedies in 103, that we might look to Hauser, because the mental health issues kids are experiencing are starting earlier.
Well, yeah, and here's the thing. We, we discussed that with Hauser about this text program. I believe they're doing a wait-and-see of how it works at RV. We will absolutely roll it out to the, to the middle schools and the grade schools as time goes on. Absolutely, because we think it's a worthwhile program.
Very good. Trustee Luffer, do you have anything else to add?
No.
Thank you for the idea of the bank for them, so. We'll see. And thank you for the information about the Presbyterian Church, trustee Clark. All right.
Maybe the funds from the raffle, the balloon, could go to the food bank.
Very good. Unfinished business. We have the pending approval of the budget. It has been open for public inspection for more than the necessary 30 days. We have had no comments or inquiries, and so we are ready for that approval. So, if I could have a motion to adopt the budget ordinance for, as you see on page seven of that.
I move that we adopt the budget ordinance on page seven.
Second.
Oh, just the language is on page seven. Thank you. Trustee Luffer, seconded by trustee Clark, has moved the approval of the budget ordinance for 2019, 2020. And I would like a roll-call vote on this.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hylmbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. We, I have, I have not found another legal counsel yet. I'm, I'm still researching. There were a few other matters that came up, so my, my search has diminished. Those of you who may be going to the trustees' division, I believe that there's some lawyers that are speaking to that division at this next meeting, which I cannot attend. And I would ask that if somebody, if somebody impresses you, please let me know, so that I can reach out.
Do we still have our old?
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah. No, we haven't severed any relationship.
Okay.
Yeah, no. And we still call as, as needed on various items, and it's always very reasonable. Brookfield Independence Day Parade, we did finally get their application. You can see that theirs is much more thorough. They require the insurance and all that good stuff. But we've previously approved the Riverside and North Riverside ones, and so if you would, I would appreciate a motion.
I make a motion that we participate in the Brookfield Independence Day Parade.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Hylmbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to, to participate in the Brookfield 4th of July Independence Day Parade. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Then we have the Cook County Township Day events. Just a reminder that all that is going on, on June 15th. Have we confirmed the bikes?
I confirmed them several months ago, but I will reconfirm.
Right, okay. And, yeah, and we, we can talk offline on that, but to get that all lined up, and we'll, I think that we need to take an ad out, as well as create some flyers about that, stir up some interest.
That's June 15th, right?
Correct. Correct.
And our meeting is?
June 11.
June 11.
June 11. So are we going to have enough time to put ads in the paper and stuff like that? But I don't know.
Well, I think that, you know, we pay for them after the fact. Do you approve, I mean, do you have any objection to, we have some budget for publicity, so we'll, we'll place them and then the.
I was going to do that.
The warrants would be approved later.
So we'll have it in the 12th and June 12th and.
I would say a couple of weeks, maybe. I would like to do it the week before.
And then the week before that, like June 5th then?
Yeah. Yeah, I think at least two weeks running in that.
So it just the landmark, or are we going to do the suburban life?
We could do the life too.
I absolutely do suburban.
Life, okay. So ads in both papers on the 5th, well, suburban life comes out on Wednesdays, right?
It comes a day later. I think they come out on Thursday. I think they're a day later than the landmark.
So we want ads in the landmark and the suburban life, the week of June 3rd and the week of June 10th.
Very good. And, well, we'll try to get eye-catching and so forth. Okay, we should, we've been talking about scheduling a meeting to discuss the celebration of township activities that are coming up over the next months, over the next year. So tell me what, what looks good for you.
Do we want to do a social-like event to kind of discuss this and then have an official meeting? Or do we want to just, how do we want to handle this?
I think we should have committee of the whole meetings starting as soon as possible.
Okay, what days of the week are good for you?
I mean, we could do it on, we could leave it on Tuesdays. We could start, we could do the fourth Thursday, the fourth Tuesday of every month, and if we need to change it to.
I would rather do it the first Tuesday of the month.
Yep, that's, that works, first Tuesday every month.
Or between now and then?
And, yep, and if we need to scale them back or not have it, that's fine. If we need to add more, that's fine too.
Okay.
Let's start the first Tuesday in June. Right, it's a committee of the whole meetings, so it'll be posted, just like our regular meetings.
Okay. I'll, I'll make sure that that's available, that there's a room in the building that's available, so.
At 7:00 over 10.
You want 7:00 or you want it earlier? Later?
7:00 is fine with me.
I can't make it four since.
7:00 PM, okay. So 7:00 PM?
7:00 is fine with you?
So it's fine with me.
So the first, first Tuesday?
June 4th.
June 4th. And the agenda should include the anniversary celebrations and, in general, communications and public relations.
Yeah.
Right? Those were two topics that we said.
Very good.
Yeah.
Depending on how much we're going to do for the celebration, I think we need to consider hiring a professional event planner.
As possible.
We can discuss.
That's something that we'll discuss in the meetings. That's what the meetings are for.
Right, exactly, because.
So come with your ideas so that we can get going on that first Tuesday of each month. We're going to start with June 4th.
Going to do it on July 2nd too, then?
The first Tuesday of every.
First, first Tuesday every month.
Okay.
I think we should, I think it's imperative that for this first meeting, if the supervisor would be so kind as to prepare or bring financial documents and stuff so we could talk about budget, because I think knowing what we can and cannot do will dictate how and what. And if our, if we need to start looking at seeking funding elsewhere, if our eyes are too big, whatever, I think it's imperative for that first meeting to have some financial information.
Very good. Well, yeah, I'll bring, I'll bring the year-end expenditures for the last two years to see how we have been spending, where we tend to have money left over, and compare it to the new budget that we just approved. Okay? Very good. Well, then, that is scheduled for June 4th, and I will remind everyone in advance of that, and we'll post that meeting. And then, coming back to you, I keep getting calls about the, because we had deferred previously the decision on whether to, to go with that LED lighting for the bridge. I know that you were interested in other bids. I've been looking around, I have not been finding other, I don't know why I got two of these. Is anybody missing one of the?
For the bridge?
Yeah, the Twin Supplies Limited Bridge Lighting Program. This was where it would, pretty much, the second page shows how, what the savings is over time. Bless you.
Bless you.
I have one.
I make a motion, we approve the twin light, twin supplies for the upgraded swinging bridge lighting.
I second it.
I have a motion by trustee Heilenbach, seconded by trustee Lepfer, to approve the upgrade of the lighting on the swinging bridge to LED for the proposal of twin supplies. And I did confirm that the bid is still good, so that would be at a cost of $1,194.
Could I ask one favor, that they estimate the amount of cost savings in electricity?
It's in the second page.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's all, it was all broken down.
Yeah.
So the payback is two years?
Yeah, I think that.
Okay, return on investment, 49.
Very important.
Yes. So then, then there's the savings over five years and 10 years.
Yes.
All of that is listed there. Okay. Very good, then, that is an expenditure, so clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lepfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. And then just reminders, really, that is that the senior fair is this Thursday. You have the flyer in your packets, I believe. And then, so if, I know that trustee Clark, you said you would be there.
Yes, what time do you want to be there? Like 9:30?
I think, yeah, we'll, we'll set up at 9:00 and it opens at 10:00, but you, if you want to get parking, I would get there as soon after 9:00 as you can.
Okay.
You need help set up, throw stuff over?
I think that between Marjorie and myself, we can do that. I thought that I was going to have to leave, but so far, I may not have to. And then, again, if you have not already let me know, as of, as of the other day, we understand that the following people plan to participate in the golf outing, trustee Drapka, trustee Clark, and a guest, and trustee Heilenbach, and then Andy Lutha from the staff. If, if any of you have other people to come, I don't golf, but my son and daughter would be willing to golf if there's vacancies on it so that we fill out the foursome. And my son has recommended that, that trustee Heilenbach be in the foursome behind him rather than in front of him, so that he doesn't hit him with a golf ball.
So then we can, Tim, we can aim for Adam.
It's going to be whack-a-mole.
Is there a, is there a sign-up sheet like they did last time in the, in the office?
A sign-up genius has been sent to you several times.
I thought, I thought we had like.
Oh, we, well, the form.
That's fine, never mind, never mind. All right, we can, yeah, all right.
Your son can have my spot.
Very good, yeah, mine too. And if anybody wants to just come for lunch, let us know too.
I don't know, you know, trustee Drapka had several people, so.
Yeah, we can.
So we have, we would, if, if you have others that you want to invite, then let me know, because my kids won't then.
No.
But, but, so we're up to seven people then?
I wouldn't mind the lunch, but.
Right. And you're, you're more than welcome to come to that, so.
So wait, who's the seven? Mike, Andrew, and your two kids, and Tim, and my guest, and Tim's guest, is that it?
Yes.
I, I didn't put down for a guest, because I waited to see.
Yeah, yeah, if you, if you have a guest to bring, please do.
I will bring a guest.
Excellent. Then we, then we're all full up. Get me the name as soon as you can so that we can submit the foursomes. Tiger Woods, okay.
I hear he's been wearing his green jacket.
Okay.
Lot of pressure.
He's been wearing his green jacket, I would bet, I hear that.
And then, I already basically gave you the update. Please do check our website because there are things improved on a regular basis, so keep checking that. And you have a report from that, from her as well, on what kind of hits we're getting, and that there was an uptick. So I think right after that article appeared about us, you'll see that there was a lot more people that, the Google Analytics, that we suddenly had a lot more take a look at it, so we need to, that's why she started doing the Facebook, so that we can start feeding more towards the, the website as well. But if you want to take a look at the analytics and if you have any questions about that, give us a call. Andy might be able to explain it better than I, but, but we'll get you that detail. And we are down to the approval of warrants. And trustee Clark, do you have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the general warrant in the amount of $41,559.11.
Second.
A motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Heilenbach, to approve the general warrants in the amount of $41,559.11. Would you please call the roll, clerk Blau?
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lepfer?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I make a motion that we underwrite the payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, $1,783.62. Payroll warrant, $16,397.82. Health warrant, $1,759.58. Grants in the amount of $1,600. General assistance, $5,025.41. Township radio players, $200. And food pantry, $182.8.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, it's seconded by trustee Heilenbach, to approve the following warrants. Utility warrant in the amount of $1,783.62. Payroll warrant in the amount of $16,397.82. Health warrant in the amount of $1,759.58. Grants warrant in the amount of $1,600. General assistance warrant in the amount of $5,025.41. Township radio players warrant in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant in the amount of $182.8. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Lepfer?
Yes.
Trustee Heilenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I am going to abstain one day, just so it's not unanimous.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
I second it. It's been a beautiful meeting.
Thank you very much. I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Drapka, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.